Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, November 7th, in the town of Hingham. We've had a slight technical delay, and that's why we're just getting underway for those of you at home. Let me quickly go through the agenda for this evening. We have a call to order, some minutes to approve, two public hearings, a third hearing on tax classification, a review of the 25 percent design for the Derby Street, a discussion on the town forest management. We will have a discussion on liquor license fee renewals, and we'll continue the ongoing discussion that we've had on Selectmen goals and objectives, followed by Selectmen Town Administrative Reports. We will be going into executive session, not to return, for two issues which I'll announce at the time. So with that, I'd like to invite Aquarian, if they're present, to come up and talk to us on a public hearing concerning a new eight-inch diameter cement line. You could tell us who you are, sir, and so the folks at home.
Good evening. Blake Lucas, Director of Operations with Aquarian Water Company.
Oh, Blake, yeah, we finally get to meet you. Very nice. Welcome to Hingham.
Thank you very much. So I am, before the Board of Selectmen tonight, requesting consent of a grant of location on Ward Street. It is the installation of approximately 500 linear feet of eight-inch cement line ductile iron water main and associated valves and fittings. The water main will be a continuation from the intersection of Black Rock Drive to 90 Ward Street, and this is being done to provide water service to the 90 Ward Street property.
Blake, well, Harry Sylvester, our town highway superintendent, is coming up. Blake, I just want to welcome you, as I said before, to the town for the folks at home. Blake is, I guess you're assisting John Walsh, who has been promoted as to Senior Vice President of Operations for Aquarian, so he has Massachusetts and Connecticut responsibilities.
That's correct.
So he hasn't learned, as any of us have, how to be in two places at the same time, so you're the alter ego. Harry, are there any issues on this?
No, not any issues regarding the installation, other than the time of year. We plan an onsite meeting probably sometime next week early, and go over the details of what the contractor has planned, who's going to install it, and then we'll make a decision then on what we'll allow this late in the season, what we won't. And maybe we'll undertake construction this season and put a final patch in the spring if schedules can be worked out.
Okay. So when will the work commence, do you suspect?
It's hard to say right now without having a meeting with the contractor, but it all depends on, you know, how fast he is quick to mobilize and what his time schedule is in installing it, whether we approve it or not for this fall. We generally allow a little bit of leeway at the end of the season beyond the 15th. We use like three-day windows for weather purposes on allowing construction to continue beyond the 15th.
All right. Blake, with the residents affected, have any outages of water during this period?
No, there are no planned outages during this period. I will also note, just in regards to scheduling, that all of the paperwork on Aquarian's and as far as contracts with the property owner are in place. Contractor's been selected, so assuming that they are able to expedite things, then it is possible for a false start, but as Harry mentioned, it's all dependent on the meeting and how quickly they can mobilize.
Okay. Irma?
Blake, welcome.
Thank you very much.
What is the proposed building? Who is the, is this, this is closer to High Street and then?
You'll have to forgive me not being that familiar with the area. I'm not sure how close to High Street it is.
Because it says it's a proposed new building.
That's correct. It's the Hingham Congregation of Jehovah's Witness.
Got it. I know where it is. Okay, no, I don't really have any questions, as long as you can get it all done before the snow hits. Yep, I'm good.
Thank you.
Paul? Harry, where's the closest water line in this area besides Ward Street and Black Rock?
I'm not sure about that.
Is there one on Viking Lane?
Yeah, that's possible, but if they try to take it down Viking Lane, there's a lot of legend that road. I'm pretty familiar with that, since the light department had put that main duct line going up through Black Rock back in, I think it was the early 2000s.
It's my understanding there is a water line in place, though, on Viking Lane. Couldn't they just tie into that without disrupting the 500 feet of Ward Street?
Well, they'd have to, well, they'd probably have to come down one way or the other, unless they got retained evens. I'm not sure if they had bucked that property. I don't know. And I'm not sure of the size of the main. Do you have that information, or?
I don't have that information with me. Is that one of these dead-end streets on the opposite end of the property?
Yeah.
Off High Street?
No, it's off of Ward Street.
It's right behind the site.
It would be up, let's see, up here.
Runs off of Ward Street.
All right.
I don't know, right? Let's see, somewhere right here. It's not an active development. It's partially constructed and has not been finished. Utilities are in.
Are you going to be present during the compaction?
We will have, oh, I'm sorry.
They'll have to have a compaction test, and we'll get the results of those done. Independent engineer.
Okay.
Nuclear density compaction tests. They're required.
I mean, is the reality that this is going to be started this late in the year?
Well, it all depends on, you know, how quick they can mobilize and what their schedule would be. If they can say, "We can do this in five days, and we can start mobilize now," that would be reasonable and would probably allow them to install that.
Should we make, if I may, Paul, should we make the vote contingent, that if they can't do it in five days, that it doesn't make sense? I mean, we don't want to have them start three weeks from now, and then the next thing you know.
Well, we wouldn't allow, you know, a three-week window for construction and stuff. We work on three-day windows regarding weather now as it is after beyond the 15th on, like, people who have already applied for gas services and they couldn't, haven't been able to get them in at this point in time. We look at the weather three days in advance and allow them to continue or shut the project down. I wouldn't want to have a project half-done, you know, to go three weeks in advance and then just have to shut it down in between. Wouldn't be fair to them, it wouldn't be fair to us, and we'd have a lousy product in the field.
How old was Ward Street in terms of when it was last paved?
It was done, I don't have the exact date, but I think it was like in 2006, somewhere about that.
Mr. Chairman, to answer some of your questions, your approval tonight is granting them the right to make application essentially to the DBW. The DBW still will dictate when this happens and when it doesn't happen.
Yeah, but-
And they have that authority, so you're not granting them universal authority to do it whenever they want.
Would they have to come back to us if it exceeds the capacity of this water season?
I don't believe so. If you grant them a location and they don't put it in now, they could put it in the spring.
Yeah, as of right now, there's no limitation to grant a location, just on the street open permit itself. They'd have to, you know, if they apply for the permit, we granted the permit now to start work, and they had to be shut down, they have to reapply for another permit to continue the project in the spring.
Blake, is there, do you know, is there going to be a need for a fire hydrant? Because this building is considerably bigger than the one that's there, and it looks like it could be a much more complex building. And I don't remember the fire hydrant situation going up and down Ward Street. I was trying to picture it, and I can't.
Yeah.
I can picture exactly where this is.
All right.
Do you know?
I do, yeah. There actually is a proposed fire hydrant involved with this project.
Excellent.
It will be located on Ward Street, not on the private property of the building.
Thank you.
Is it shown on the plan?
It is shown on the plan.
Where? That's my problem. I couldn't see it.
It's right below the Ward cap, right at the end of the water main.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Irma, one of the reasons they're increasing the size of the pipe is because of the fire suppression requirements of the building, because of the size. So I think, you know, that's what would fight a fire there, is the sprinkler system they have in the building.
Okay. Is this area fed by wells, generally? This area of Ward Street?
I'm not sure.
I believe there are wells there, if I remember from the Ward Street Field Project.
It shows a well right on the plant.
Nonpartable, though.
Yeah.
Well, the water comes in from Ward Street to feed Black Rock. The extent of that prior to the construction of Black Rock, and I'm not exactly sure where they ended up hooking it up, I think it was on the west side of Ward Street, down closer towards Old Ward. And it doesn't go all the way to Cushion Street, goes, comes back down towards High Street.
Let me ask this, there, normally these things happen rather judiciously. This is taking some time. I guess I want to get a sense of my colleagues. Are you ready to proceed, or are there some concerns here that we should cause us to wait?
To me, it's late in the season. This is a big scar on the street. You know, if there's an alternative access that can be used that doesn't result in this kind of construction on Ward Street, I'd like just to know that. I don't think the answer is clear there. It's my understanding there's a water line on Viking Lane, and if that can be tied in in some way, you wouldn't have to cut up Ward Street.
Which would significantly reduce the cost to the property owner, wouldn't it? Because they're paying for this, right?
That's correct. There is, I mean, I'm, again, on the locust map, I don't see Viking Street, so I'm not 100 percent certain of where it's coming in.
Viking, right?
No, well, this is, this is on the circle. Viking comes on, right beyond the bend of the road with the S's and Street.
They're putting a new line and feeder fire suppression system.
So, I mean, the issue, I guess, with Viking, we would have to look into, not only-
Size of the line?
Yeah, the size of the line that's on Viking, but also what properties are in between, because that would require easement across private properties.
Right. There appears to be a consensus to allow this to proceed, but I'm going to put the onus on you, Harry, to make sure that if, one, if Viking Lane isn't an alternative, just advised head of that, if you would, of that effect, and, two, that if we get, if you're suspicious that this cannot work in time to get the road back in shape for winter conditions, that you exercise good judgment, and as you usually do, and not allow this to proceed.
Of course.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion then. Irma, be so kind.
Sure. I make a motion to approve the request of the Aquarian to install and maintain approximately 500 feet of new eight-inch diameter cement line ductile iron water main and associated valves and fittings in Ward Street, Hingham. The water main will originate from an existing water main located at the intersection of Black Rock Drive and continue to completion in a northerly direction at 90 Ward Street. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated October 1st, 2013.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you very much.
While we're waiting for the next person to come up from-
Sure, I'll make a motion that the board vote to approve the minutes of October 16, 2013, and October 10, 2013, as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing at the request of National Grid to install some pipe on Highview Drive.
My name is Dennis Regan, and I'm the permit representative for National Grid, and tonight National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately 50 feet, more or less, of two-inch gas main in Highview Drive, Hingham, from the existing two-inch gas main in private property at house number 38 easterly to house number 39 for a new gas service.
Paul, any questions?
None, other than the observation, it seems it's getting a little late in the season. Are we going to have too many more of these, or?
Are we going to have what?
Too many more of these. This is pretty much-
I have, I have no idea. I deliver these to Harry the day I get them, and I don't know what's-
Well, the plants close at a certain time of year, right?
Well, the company that works, does the work for, the gas company owns their own asphalt plant, so they stay open year-round when they have products going on. Just to give you a heads-up, we're trying to encourage the gas company to replace the main in Fort Hill Street in Fresh River Ave. It's almost a mile of gas main. This may be coming before you for a grant of a location. In the coming weeks, we'd like this to be a winter project. Just, the simple fact is that that road is on the construction schedule, it wasn't only for this year, which was deferred because of the gas main replacement, so now it goes on to next year's construction schedule. We'd like to get this gas main replaced as soon as possible, so the action of settlement will be minimal on the road, basically, we pave the road. This is not a usual occurrence, however, we have done it in the past. Petrie Hill, if you recall, we replaced the main during the winter months, so we could get that paved and resurfaced for the summer months for the repaving, and of course, the Fourth of July festivities, and that worked out well.
Does the, excuse me-
Sure, go ahead.
Does the pavement that you use in this plant have any kind of qualities to it that make it last at least as long as the traditional pavement?
Well, like, increase the heat of the asphalt as it comes out of the plant, and use, they don't park the truck, they use it immediately. We're not really too concerned about that. I mean, we could, we'd like to have that mixed-analyzed to make sure it meets state specifications as it's being put down.
Have you had experience other than the Petrie Hill job with it?
In winter months?
Yeah.
Only on emergency leaks throughout the town, which they repair on a regular basis throughout the winter months.
And it's standing up?
Yeah, pretty much so. The mix that we put in Fort Hill Street, if it's a good quality and we deem it's, you know, satisfactory, we'll be paving over it and then resurfacing it over that, so I don't anticipate any problems.
Okay.
When you put a gas main, and that only goes down 24 to 30 inches maximum, water mains, you're talking, you know, four feet, so it's, you know, quite a bit deeper cut and a lot more chance to settle when the gas work.
Irma?
Dennis, I know the area well, so I don't have any questions on this, but another question for you. Do you know what the backlog is of requests that, and the reason I ask is I'm aware of several requests that I don't think have gotten to you yet, that are like months and months old, and we're waiting for National Grid.
For gas mains?
Gas.
Gas mains, gas services?
Gas service.
Yeah, services. I don't get involved with the services that are installed in Hingham. I'm with the, I handle the grant of locations for when we're replacing mains or we're adding new main with a service.
Maybe this is new main with the service. I'm thinking of the one at Main and Water Street, Harry.
Main and Water Street? It hasn't been, you know, a hearing on that. I guess the request was denied.
You, perhaps you denied it, but now they're waiting. They're waiting for National Grid.
The National Grid called me up and said the hearing was canceled on behalf of the applicant.
How old is the street in that area?
Water Street was constructed in 2010. Main Street, it was 2012. So they both have to go before the board to, well, get approval.
Well, I'm, so I'll stand corrected. They did, this particular applicant did pull themselves off the agenda, but that was because they were waiting for National Grid to give them information. They didn't get it, so there was no point coming here. Do you have any idea what the backlog is?
Honestly, I don't.
Okay.
You don't have anything sitting there, I guess, is the, that's the question.
For the, for the mains, relay mains, and mains that involve services, when I get the information, I drop it off here the next day, and as a courtesy, I leave a copy with Harry. Within a day, and then I get a hearing notice within, within a week or so.
So you're current?
Thank you.
Your current is what you're, as far as you know?
With everything that gets to you.
Yes.
To you.
In regards to the permits that have already been applied for and signed regarding services, service connections, there's probably people watching tonight who are in that situation. I spoke to the supervisor just yesterday, in fact, and he said he's extremely backlogged on permits that have already been pulled and scheduled to be, new services hooked up to these homes. He probably won't get to it by the 15th, but I told him we would give the three-day window and try to get all those services in before the bad weather, you know, occurs. So I think between the two of us, if the weather cooperates, everyone has a permit for the new gas service will get them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Irma, could you?
I did the, you want to?
I'm sorry, Paul, with that, thank you.
I'll do it.
I'll move to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 50 feet, more or less, of two-inch gas main in Highview Drive. This gas main will originate from private property at house number 38 and continue under the surface of Highview Drive the entire length of the completion at house number 39. All approvals and conditions must be in place with the owner of the property of number 38 Highview Drive prior to the commencement of the work. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated October 15, 2013.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harry.
Dennis, what will we do over the winter?
Christmas is upcoming. Thank you again.
All right. Good night.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the tax classification, as mentioned, as required by law. This is an annual meeting that we hold, and I'd like to welcome Greg Hall from the Board of Assessors and our town assessor, Rick Nolan.
Good evening. I'm Rick Nolan, Director of Assessing. Just a few words about the classification hearing. A classification hearing is required by state law to be held at the Selectmen's meeting each, sorry, to be held at the Selectmen's meeting each year to decide whether to shift the tax burden between the property classes per Mass. General Law 40-56. A split rate does not change the total levy of the community, it simply determines the share to be borne by each class. A split rate does not increase the revenue for the town, nor does it determine the tax rate for the town. The Board of Assessors are charged with presenting all classification options to the Board of Selectmen. There are three phases of the classification process. The town must value all property at full in cash value. The town must classify each parcel according to use, and the town must allocate its tax levy among the various classes of property. At the fiscal 2013 classification hearing, the Board of Assessors recommended to the Board of Selectmen that a task force or committee be formed to review the classifications options for fiscal 2014. The Board of Selectmen formed this committee. The committee held three public meetings to review the various options and information about classification and the split rate issue. I'd like to read a note from the Tax Classification Review Committee. Gentlemen and Selectmen, woman, lota, please advise that at our third and final tax classification review meeting held this afternoon, October 29, 2013, there was a motion made and seconded to recommend to the Hingham Board of Selectmen at the annual tax classification hearing currently scheduled for November 7, 2013, that the Selectmen vote in favor of continuing a single tax rate. The vote of the review committee was unanimously approved and adopted. It was further recommended by this committee that no additional study regarding a split rate should be required until such time that a percentage of commercial properties versus residential properties has significantly increased or is a result of some other qualifying event to which just further review should be necessary. Respectfully submitted, Michael Shaughnessy, Ben Burnham, and Edward Colbert.
I think we've had some public discussion on this question, but just to refresh, the issue at hand is that this year, the residential, the residences, 80 percent of our revenue comes from, from the assessment process, the property values, and 80, I think it's 89 percent of the residents-
About 87, and 2 percent was personal property and 11 percent commercial.
That's right. So it's roughly, to move the commercial, as Rick just stated, the 11 percent, you would have to move the commercial a considerable amount in order to affect $1 in tax relief for the, for the residential. You'd have to move it about $10 in that rate to accomplish anything significant. And I, as, I was the liaison to the committee, and Ted was there as well, the assessment of the committee was that you'd have to move that, you'd have, you need more of a presence of commercial properties in order for this to be, should be reconsidered, unless some other significant event would occur. And therefore, it was, that was the basis for the recommendation. Did I say that, Rick?
Yes.
I'm your replacement, Greg. That's the way it is. Okay. Are there any questions of my colleagues on this?
I have none. Thank you for your work.
I think you documented your work extremely well. You all have taught me quite a bit, and buried me in numbers, which I love, of course, but I really commend you for your work and the committee. Good job.
That was good. Okay. With that being said, so that means we will continue forward on the same and singular rate, and I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I move that we vote to continue to tax all classes of properties at a single rate.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to thank and congratulate the Selectmen, Ted Alexiatis, and the Tax Split Committee on the forththinking that they have put into this program. I attended all the meetings, as you did, and I think it shows great progress by the town.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you for that.
And you'll notice, as usual, I never move my lips.
Thanks, Greg.
The next portion of our meeting is a presentation and discussion to update us on the proposed 25 percent design for Derby Street. We have had this discussion before, and Roger has come back after considerable discussion with various folks, so, Mr. Fernandez, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. Mr. Fernandez, how are you, sir? Thank you very much. Good. I think the first step may be, if the Board would allow, just, I prepared a little background to give those folks who are not familiar with what we're talking about a little sense of where we're going. The town, through the Board of Selectmen, set forth an initiative to undertake the design and the project development of the Derby Street corridor. Ultimately, the goal is to advance the project through the Transportation Improvement Program, where the town, acting as the project proponent, would develop the design permitting and estimates necessary to construct the Derby Street corridor from Cushion Street to the southbound ramp. The goal is to seek state transportation improvement program funding for the reconstruction of the corridor. The intent of the project would be to address the safety concerns, the level of service at the ramps, and to accommodate multimodal forms of transportation, i.e. bike lanes and sidewalks. Please consider that the corridor is located in the state layout, and consequently, the final design must meet state approval. It will surely undergo a vigorous review by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Technical Staff, and as a result, the design is constructed such that it meets the intent, I'm sorry, the design meets that intent. Guidelines require that Mass. dot, the project, in the project advancement consist of early coordination, 25 percent, 75 percent, and final design review in parallel with programming for potential funding. The process can take several years, so there will be ample time to see the project evolve. The next step would be to submit the 25 percent design, which was initially presented to the Board on August 7. At that time, we met with the Board and received direction and comments from the Board that included instructions to present the planning, to the planning board the plan itself, and we did that on September 16. We met with the planning board. It was well-received, and they provided us with some, they provided us with some welcome observations. In addition to that, on September 10, prior to the planning board meeting, we met with Jeffrey Dirk, the planning board's traffic consultant. He also recognized the project as being fully designed, and we also welcomed his, welcomed his observations and comments. As a fallout of the August 7 meeting, the Board at that time asked us to do a couple of things. One was to review the existing Derby Street over Route 3A bridge capacities. Two was to provide some background and comparisons to the Route 53 Hanover Bridge over Route 3. Three was to consider the growth at the existing Derby Street over Route 3 Bridge and the corridor in general. in general. And then lastly, was to consider seasonal traffic effects and what that might mean on the corridor itself. So again, today, I'm accompanied by Mr. John Morgan, traffic engineer at CHA. Today, if it satisfies the Board, we'd like to first attack those initial comments that we received from the Board and sort of show you how we try to, show you how we try to address those particular issues and concerns. Do you want to take it from there, John?
Sure. Thank you, Roger. So we looked at each of those questions that were raised at the last hearing. The first one regarding the Route 3 Bridge, the bridge over Route 3 along Derby Street. We looked at the capacity of the bridge, and when we look at capacity of the bridge, we look at the peak hour. And during the peak hour, a roadway such as Derby Street can carry approximately 1,800 vehicles per hour, per lane. And the existing volumes on, over the Derby Street Bridge are about 1,400 vehicles per hour in the eastbound direction and about 940 in the westbound direction. Those are existing 2012 volumes from the time we had done our traffic counts for this project. Projected into the future, we look at a design year of 10 years out, 2022, and in the eastbound direction, we're looking at about 1,500, slightly over 1,500 cars in the eastbound direction. So we're still below the 1,800 car capacity, and the westbound direction is just over 1,000. So we're still below the 1,800 in the future design year. These are under average conditions. We also looked at the potential for future buildout of the available land that is owned by the Bristol, Bristol family, and did some projections based on a potential buildout of what we thought might be able to fit there, which is about 1.5 million square feet office type development, a business park use, which the Institute of Transportation Engineers has some information on how many trips that may generate. So we projected out if, what type of volumes we'd be looking at over the bridge under conditions in 2022 with the added traffic from that development. And with that, we'd be looking at about, close to 1,700 vehicles in the eastbound direction over the bridge and about 1,400 in the westbound direction. So we're still below the 1,800 vehicle capacity for a single lane, but we're getting very close in the eastbound direction. So as part of the proposed project, we are proposing to change the lane configuration over the bridge from one lane in the eastbound direction to two lanes, which would essentially double your capacity in that direction. We chose changing the eastbound direction because that is the higher volume and in more of a, it would represent more of a benefit to change the eastbound direction to two lanes. The bridge is not wide enough to change it to two lanes in both directions. We could only fit the, a increase in travel lanes in one direction while maintaining the minimum width to shoulders for bicycles. So we had to select one direction versus the other without complete reconstruction of the bridge, which would be a, out of the scope of what we were proposing to do for this project. We also looked at the peak seasonal conditions at the bridge. We did a projection of, our traffic counts were based on the average season, and we also looked at the peak seasonal condition. So the, the peak seasonal buildout projected to 2022 with the added traffic from the Bristol property and the, and the projected peak season traffic would be over 1,800, be about 1,850 cars in each eastbound direction. So it would be exceeding the capacity of a single lane. So that is a, that can be a bit of a concern going forward if we don't change the lane configuration over the bridge to add capacity by doubling the number of lanes in the eastbound So that's really where we're at with the, what we looked at as far as how much capacity is on the bridge? Do we have, you know, enough lanes? And that's, that's why we're proposing to change to two lanes in the eastbound direction as part of this project.
Excuse me, would it be a good time to stop at this point and let us ask questions, or is it better for us to hear the whole?
If you have questions on this topic, sure, go ahead.
When did you, you refer to peak hour. When did you do the traffic studies? What time of the year?
The traffic studies counts were done in June of 2012. They were done in the weekday morning, afternoon, and Saturday peak periods.
How did you then build seasonality into that?
The seasonality was based on some statistics available from the Institute of Transportation Engineers for Shopping Centers, which is what we have in this area. What we did was, the, the data from the ITE indicates that shopping centers generate about 40% more traffic during the, during the November and December peak holiday season. So we bumped up the numbers on Derby Street that were associated with the, with the Derby shops by 40% and added those to the, to the counts we had.
Do you know that seasonality for shopping centers? Does that vary by if a shopping center is also a restaurant destination, or is it just general shopping centers?
It's, it's general shopping centers. It takes all different kinds into consideration and becomes an average.
Okay.
Okay. Paul?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay.
I do. Just your, I have to say something. The assumptions that you go into this, it's a 10-year look.
Yes.
What's the, tell me, what's the plus or minus on this? Do you have any sense of that? Is this a statistically reliable 3%, 3%? Would you, would you bet your life on it? Or, let me give you different standards.
But I bet my life on it, no. I mean, we use, we use the best we have for the data. The data we have available, we use the, you know, we use typical standard projections. A lot of things can happen in 10 years. New developments can come in, things like that can happen. They could really change traffic patterns.
Okay. That triggered a question from my colleague.
What would be the differential if the Bristol property was owned something other than what it is to a more intense use such as retail? What would the traffic generator be? By percentages?
The traffic generator would be a lot higher on Saturdays, for sure, if it was a retail development versus an office use. The, the morning would be actually higher with the office use, the morning traffic. The PM peak would, I think it would be pretty, pretty close. It would really be, the difference you'd notice would be in the Saturday volumes.
But you wouldn't have the business commuting problems at that time, right?
Correct.
Presumably, commuter problems.
Correct.
Okay. Could you go to the next issue?
Sure. The other thing we looked at regarding the same topic, the bridge, was a comparison to the bridge in Hanover on Route 53 that is close to the Hanover Mall, located over Route 3. So it's a similar style bridge. That bridge was recently reconstructed. What we found was that, in our research of that project is, initially started out as a bridge rehabilitation project. The intent was to just rehabilitate the bridge, but once they got into that work, they discovered that the bridge had structural issues and needed to be reconstructed. So ultimately, they decided if they're going to reconstruct the entire bridge, that they would also widen it because they were going to spend the money to reconstruct it, they were going to add additional lanes. So it didn't necessarily start out as a project to increase capacity. We did a little bit of research. That location carried about 25,000 vehicles per day back in 2002. That was the most recent count that was available for Mass. DOT over the bridge. Derby Street carries about 27,000 vehicles over the day currently. So it's fairly close. The other thing we realized is that as far as the cost to replace that bridge, their project ended up costing about $9 million to replace the bridge. So it's a, you know, it's a fairly expensive proposition to replace a bridge. So that's some comparative information that we, we were able to determine on, on the project.
Have we done a survey as to the existing, the condition of the bridge in question here?
We have.
Are you going to run into the same problem?
We have received bridge inspection reports, so we, for the Derby Street Bridge, and it's not, there are no major structural issues currently that have been identified.
Is it built around the same time as the other bridge down the road?
I don't recall the year of the bridge. I know that it's done, there has been a couple of projects as far as maintenance to that bridge to some structural improvements over the years, but I don't know when it was actually constructed.
The, our bridge, the Derby Street bridge you're talking about?
Yeah. I can't recall exactly when it was built, but...
It was put in 1955, 58? Our bridge.
Okay.
Actually, Paul's questions were right along where I was going. When was the Hanover Bridge built?
Originally, or the new one?
No, the new one's beautiful.
Yeah.
The old one?
I don't, I don't have it with me.
Hypothetically, let's say you get into this and you find out there's structural issues that can't be seen until you begin tearing it apart. Then what happens?
Well, under this project, we're not actually proposing to do anything that would tear the bridge apart. We would really be just milling and overlaying the surface course pavement and then restriping to change the number of, change how the existing width of the bridge is used. So you'd basically just be doing a surface course of pavement on the bridge. So you wouldn't be getting into the structural issues, per se.
Well, I just would like to add that as part of the project, because they're proposing three lanes potentially, an additional lane, I should say, then Mastat's structural division will look at the bridge and determine that the bridge can take that capacity. So they'll, they'll look at their own bridge and determine whether or not that's going to work as part of the process.
Have you considered the snaking down to two lanes when you go across the bridge, when you're going from the three to two? If I'm looking at that correctly?
In the westbound direction?
Yes. You eventually get back to two lanes.
In the westbound direction, what we are proposing, yes, at this traffic signal, you'll have two through lanes coming through the traffic signal at the ramps. And then there'll also be the, and then it'll, it'll merge down to one lane to go over the bridge. And then, once you are approaching the, the ramps at the, for the southbound Route 3, there would be a single through lane, but we would widen out for a left turn lane onto the ramps. So we wouldn't be going back to two through lanes. We'd, we'd have a turning lane for the, for the ramps. But basically, once you get past the intersection of the northbound ramps, you're going down to one through lane, and that would, one through lane would, would continue all the way into Wayman.
Okay.
Mr. Dirk talked about a loop in the off-ramp to trigger the traffic control signals. Is that part of the design that you've got here?
Yes, we're going to include that in the design. Mass. DOT has reiterated that at a, at a meeting we actually had with them yesterday, that they would be requiring that, so we will be including that.
How far back from the, the off-ramp would that loop be?
Um...
Do you contemplate if you haven't already inspected?
I believe we're going to be looking at it about 400 to 500 feet up the ramp.
From the highway?
From, from Derby Street.
Next item.
We've talked about the seasonal effects. We've talked about the growth over the bridge. We've talked about the comparison to the Hanover Bridge.
A little bit more on the seasonal effects. We also looked at the seasonal effects to the rest of the corridor, to the intersections at Derby Shops and Cushing Street. And we looked at level of service of these proposed signals at the ramps, how they would look with the additional 40% traffic from the Derby Shops traffic. And what we found was that plugging in these higher volumes into our, our traffic model that we have, the level of service would still be acceptable. The two ramps would be level of service B and level of service C, while Derby Shops and Cushing Street would be level of service D in those peak seasonal periods. And that, we also looked at with the buildout of the Bristol property, that could still handle the traffic. And the, these, these level of services that I actually just mentioned were with the Bristol traffic and the seasonal traffic. So there is capacity at the intersections to handle the peak demands.
Okay. Just a, when, Roger, this is the 25% design. In the sequence of events, when would we take another look at this if there were any additional modifications that might be needed to be made?
Well, what would happen now is we would, if the Board decides to move forward, we would submit the 25% to the state. The state would in turn submit questions and ask for response to those questions. We could, we could have another look at this prior to the 75% submittal again, if that satisfies the Board. We can also talk to you offline, if you'd like, a little bit about what those comments look like from the state and how, if there's a profound difference, you know, to what we're talking about today, then we would certainly come to you at that point, tell you, hey, this is a wholesale change that the state's looking for. We'd, we'd talk to you.
Come back in there.
Yeah.
Can you confirm what was discussed at the meeting with the planning board, that if an applicant comes in with a project that feeds out on a Derby Street, the cost burden would shift to them with respect to mitigation? Is that, is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay. All right.
What does that mean? That the applicant, let's say Bristol Brothers put in a casino?
They'd be responsible for the impact of the cars hitting this road.
So they'd end up being the one that's going to make the bridge four lanes?
Potentially.
Potentially.
It's that or...
Well, if it was a casino, probably, yes. You know, their development...
Only kidding. Save, save the letters and comments.
I did not say that.
I just wanted to wake everybody up here. I think it did.
It might be an eight-lane bridge in that case. But, yeah, a lot of times it's traffic lights and...
Off-site mitigation of some type, yeah.
Or an additional on-ramp.
Slippery. And that, from my perspective, would be the most likely sort of fix. It's something that we've looked at briefly, but yeah.
What if they cut a road between, from Old 53, from Whiting Street to Derby Street? What does that do?
There would be some change in traffic patterns. I, I don't think you'd see a huge volume change on Derby Street just from connecting the road. It'd be more the development that happens.
Wouldn't that be driven by what road was connected? Like Pleasant Street?
Yeah, I mean, it's all dependent on where they connect and how difficult it is to get through their property, if it's a straight connection or roundabout way. A lot of things are dependent on, on exactly what, what they decide to build.
So what is the next step now?
The next step would be, John and his team will submit this plan and all the information required, functional design report and all that information is required as part of the 25% design submittal to the state. And then usually that, you know, we wait and wait and wait, and then they eventually get back to us and let us know, these are some concerns, these are some comments we want to take care of. The plan, the revision takes place, maybe a meeting with, with the state, and the 75% would then get submitted after that. then get submitted after that.
Is there a timeframe for that? You would guess?
Four months?
Mass DOT's review timeline has been fairly lengthy lately. I would say that once we submit the 25% design, it'd probably be about at least six months before we move to the next phase of the project. And after they review and approve the 25% design, they will actually conduct a public hearing. They'll come out to Mastat, set up a meeting. Well, they will actually be the, kind of the moderators of a public hearing that discusses right-of-way rights for bidders and all that.
Okay, so we'll have another crack at this as information becomes available.
Yeah.
Okay.
When does something actually happen that isn't on paper?
It's a long process for getting through the design process, but there's also the funding process, which can take some time as well. The funding process is driven by the regional planning agency. They decide which projects get built in which years, and the town has to advocate for their project at the regional planning agencies. And so that process can take a while as well.
So it'll be our job, my job, and whoever else wants to come with me, to go into Boston and meet with those folks periodically to make sure that they understand that this project is advancing and that at some point we're going to be seeking programming and actual funding in the future. Now, there are a number of things that can drive that. There's actually a score sheet that talks about, you know, which projects are prioritized, but economic development is one of those certain criterias that they look at in terms of prioritizing projects along with safety and other things. So it'll be our job as the project proponents and advocates to continue to make our case in parallel with the design submissions in the process.
Does the fact that we're in an area that's got expedited permitting make it more attractive to the state with respect to that?
It may. It may. I think that all those things do weigh in terms of the final decision, yeah. We're competing, basically, we're competing with other communities for that pool of money that's available. And whoever has the best location to invest that infrastructure money into, they'll do that. And that would be one instance why it may make sense.
Yeah, there is, I have read that there's Chapter 90 reconsideration monies, there's Chapter 70 reconsideration monies. And as we heard last night, which we'll talk about later, we have this other issue of FEMA, which will place further demands on those same monies, so. You can't print a dollar on a Xerox machine, so that's an issue. Okay. Is there anything else? Everybody okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a nice job.
Thank you, John. Good luck. Certainly, Mr. Chief. Chief Duff?
Mark Duff, 37 Bradley Park Drive. I apologize for not being here during the early part of this. Is this going to impact the ability for ambulances going to and from South Shore Hospital? Because it will involve the towns of Hingham, Hull, Galasit, Situate, Norwell, Hanover, Boschfield. And at any given time, there's probably 20 to 40 ambulances a day go over that bridge, if not more. Is that going to, will that impact that at all?
Well, each of the new traffic signals we're proposing will have the emergency preemption for the-
Right, but are you not anticipating any traffic shutdowns or?
No, they would maintain-
Will they be working at night?
It's tough to say at this point. It'd be up to Mass DOT to decide that, if they allow the contractor to-
Well, I do, I just need, you do need to be cognizant of the fact that there's a lot of emergency vehicles go over that area every day, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Roger. Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Roger, you have another item, and that's the construction contracts.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just getting my faculties together. So annually, I come before the board, seeking their approval on, for, I should say, construction contracts. Specifically, the contracts that I come before you today are for the equipment rental and labor services, the micro-surfacing and random crack sealing, and the hot mix production and pavement installation. Give you a little background regarding each one. The hot mix and pavement, and production and pavement installation involves the actual placement of the asphalt on the roadway. So that's a singular contract. It contains a number of different items, which include coal planning, structural adjustment, different types of mixes. Last year, we awarded that contract to T.L. Edwards. We were happy with their work, happy with the quality, happy with the service. We bid this out, we bid this outside the consortium a couple of years ago, and we actually realized the savings compared to some of other communities. And for that reason, I would recommend that the board extend the contract for another year. And I should explain that, I guess, first. So each one of these contracts has in it an extension option. So you have the base contract at the point of award, and then the option of extending it for two additional years. And it's the sole discretion of the community, of the town, if they want to extend that. So this would be, on that particular contract, the first extension or a second year in contract with T.L. Edwards.
And that price, at the price of last year's price?
With that particular one, it's the only contract, because it's a petroleum product, a bitumin product, the state mandates that we include in the contract an escalation clause. That escalation clause is required for us, for us to be able to use Chapter 90 money for these projects, which is a must, obviously. The state itself advertises those different escalation values. They provide those to us. So when we bid this project, they give us, for instance, a price per ton, which is the major component in the contract. At the point at which we award the contract, that locks us in at a certain number of, if the cost of the petroleum product goes up or down, we realize either a price increase or a price decrease from the initial point of award, if hopefully that makes sense. So that's subject to change. And that's across the board. Anyone who's putting down pavement has to deal with the same issues.
Okay, thank you.
The other contract, again, micro-surfacing contract that we have with Seal Coating, Inc., the, this would be their first extension of their contract. The micro-surfacing is the product actually we put on Main Street. It's a quarter-inch thin layer of surface treatment that we've had a great deal of success with. A lot of our roads, as a matter of fact, I think Harry and I have been talking about, we're going to shift a lot of our efforts towards micro-surfacing. It provides us not only a good product, but there's a substantial cost savings in doing it that way. So we continue to try to find ways to, you know, find value in the pavement, and this is one way to do that. So, again, if you're wondering what it looks like, Main Street was actually done with it, done with the micro-surfacing. And then the third contract was initially awarded in 2012. This would be the second and final extension option on this particular contract. It's for the equipment rental and labor services. This entails machine rental and labor for various projects throughout the town. We award the contract, for instance, if we need a road reclamer, if we need an excavator, those things are billed to us by the hour. We manage the project, Harry and I, we set up the work, and we get the machinery we think we need necessary to do that with an operator to undertake the work. If there's labor needed associated with that, we also have that in the contract, and it's basically a multiplier of the prevailing wage, which is a mandate. We have to pay them prevailing wage. So that's pretty black and white. And we're happy with the contract. We continue, we've used this contract for a number of years, and, again, we recommend that the board select me extend.
Let me, just some questions. The contractors, let's just say for the equipment, my understanding is that there are some, in some of the road rebuilding exercises, that there's limited availability of the equipment. Is that a correct understanding?
In terms of contractors that actually bid on the project?
Yeah, that have the equipment that is usable?
We provide an equipment list. We only, so I'll answer that both ways. We only receive two bidders on that particular contract. We list the equipment. What happens regularly is we have that one general contractor. If there's a piece of equipment that's on the list that he cannot provide, typically they either rent it or use a subcontractor to supply some of that stuff. So it doesn't restrict anyone who might not have a 40,000-pound excavator from doing the work. It just means if they need a 40,000-pound excavator, they need to find that from somebody else or rent it from someone else.
Under the conditions of the contract?
Under the conditions of the contract.
If we were to go out and bid these contracts again at this point in year, what would happen? Is it worth it to rebid them or not?
Well, unlike the paving contract, this particular contract, we're issued hourly rates for the machinery. Those hourly rates were the rates that were provided to us two years ago going into the third year. So those are two-year-old prices. They're locked into those prices. The contractor needs to agree to do it at that value. If we decided to rebid it, we run the risk that we're dealing with two years of escalation associated with the project, and there's a minor cost associated with bidding this stuff, but not substantial with respect to advertisements and that kind of stuff. So we do run the significant risk that, like anything else, costs go up from year to year, so we might see an increase in the pricing, yes.
Okay, Paul?
Roger, the risk of asking a naive question. All of this equipment that's been identified in this document, have you scheduled and planned for its use with the different projects that you're going to be working on in 2014? Is that how this works? Or do you just have this available to you as you need it, but don't necessarily use all of it?
A little of both, to be honest with you. So we do put together a five-year road building plan, and in that, we try to forecast, and we're usually pretty good at sticking at that, what we have for pending roadwork. So we have a dollar value that we know about. We also have the historical information, where I know that the $300,000, $350,000 numbers, what we spend from year to year. So, but we do include in this items that we, maybe we might not have conceived or think that we might need, but might need at some point. You know, and, you know, maybe we don't need a, well, I'll give you a good, for instance, we have, in Carlson Fields, we had to remove some ledge, and we did that. So, you know, some of the stuff that requires a larger machine potentially, or a machine with a hoar rim attachment to it. So some of that stuff, we might bid that, and I might not only use that once or twice in three years, but it's available to me. And what that does is it negates the need of having to put out a single bid for one job, and, which takes a-
Well, if you don't use it, do we still have to pay that figure?
Oh, no. No, only if we use it.
Only if we use it.
Yeah. It's sort of an elocot sort of menu where we can pick and choose what we want to use. Yeah.
And I take it there's a maximum use that can be used under the contract here? And if you started banging out ledge all over town with the hoar rim, would they say, hey, wait a minute? You got to pay us more for using this?
No. No. If we, they're obligated to provide the machine regardless of the quantity, and actually in the contract, we stipulate that we don't guarantee quantities. Usually, if the quantities go up, it's not an issue with the contractor. If the quantities go down and they're aggressively bidding something depending on a certain volume of work, then that might become a problem. But in this instance, going up or using a piece of machinery that they might not have anticipated using for that amount of time, it's typically not an issue.
Is any of this material used for snow removal, or is that strictly town trucks?
That's strictly separate. These contractors and others do plow snow, but Mass General laws don't require procurement for that service. It's exempt. So there's a lot more latitude in terms of who the town decides to use as a vendor to remove snow or plow snow. But this is completely separate of that.
Thank you. Irma?
I have some issues. In fact, I had asked that mass pavement be pulled off the agenda tonight. I have no problem with Seal Coating and T.L. Edwards. I did my homework, talked to some of the surrounding towns, found out what they pay. We're well within the range. Last year, on December 13th, when you brought the pavement, mass pavement contract in, and I'll read from this. Mrs. Lauder asked, requested that this contract be put out to bid next year. While she understands and supports Mr. Fernandez and that this particular contractor is easy to work with and very reliable, by just being what they are, perhaps Hingham can get a better price for the requested work. I think this one should be put out to bid. I have concerns over the mobilization costs, how that's done, where it's time and charges. Somebody's got to supervise these people. And I did watch the blowing up of the rock that I've been bugging Randy for how many years to do. That's why his hair is really short, because I bug him all the time. I'll just leave that. I think this one should be put out to bid.
If we do that, how long would that delay? What are we talking about?
A month to, between putting in the ads, soliciting the bids, receiving the insurance certificates and the bonding requirements associated with the contract, which are all statutory requirements. It's not something that we put in place to make things harder, things that they have to have. So a month to do that, and then, say, another couple of weeks to get the final approval from the board of selectmen and get things into motion. So, you know, it would not affect our upcoming construction season if that were the case. And it's, to Mrs. Lauder's question, it's, I'm not an advocate for the contractor here. I'm an advocate for what I think the best value would be for the town, but as the board, you have, of course, you know, you can tell me to go ahead and rebid this, and I will do it without hesitation.
What do you think would happen if we rebid in terms of pricing?
Well, it's, I feel that the pricing was likely to go up. I mean, it's just sort of somewhat intuitive. Is there anything that we're doing today that was, that we paid for three years ago that was cheaper? I'm not sure that I can think of a lot. So there is that risk on the, so, but if the sense is that there might be potential to save some additional money, then that's an option.
What if you broke the bid into two pieces? There are rare occasions to use certain equipment.
Yeah.
And there's some very common equipment. What if you broke it into two bids?
Well, to that, I would have to know which items you'd want to break up, and that would, you know-
You would be the expert there. What equipment do we use commonly, and what's a rarity?
We, you know, if we broke it up, then there are certain things that we would use potentially as a rarity, but then I would be submitting a contract and a bid for something that I might use on occasion. It's difficult to sort of quantify in a bid contract. We could do that, I guess, but one advantage in doing it this way, you have, you understand, is that we manage these projects as construction managers. Harry and I, we get out there, we have this, we order the material, we prep the work, we lay it out. If I have two contracts, or if I have three contractors, that I have to call the guy with the excavator one day, and I have to call the guy with the reclamer on the other day, the guy with the grader all the third day, and say, I need you all to show up here at the same time, it does become a scheduling issue. Can it be done? Anything could be done, but I think just based on that, you can see that there would be some difficulty associated with doing that versus calling a contractor, I need an excavator, I need a grader all, I need a reclamer here on Monday, and knowing that it's his responsibility to get all pieces, three pieces of equipment there in order to, excuse me, to facilitate the work. So those are some of the things that we, you know, we need to consider when we do it, when you want to take the-
But at a cost?
Yeah.
Right, it's at a cost for supervising these people.
It's at a cost, and it's, and what I'm hearing is there's no guarantee on the price.
Well, in any case, there would be a cost. So if we broke the contract up to separate certain pieces of machinery, then the, we would still be supervising two contracts. I don't know if that answered the question, but that's, we'd still be supervising two contracts.
Paul?
In your experience, does the town get a better price if it deals with a single vendor with all of these pieces? Or is the alternative that we're discussing- Or is the alternative that we're discussing give us a better bang for the buck?
Well, certainly, I would submit that there's certainly an economy of scale. So in order to win the job, maybe they take a little less on the excavator to make, to get the reclamation work. Or maybe they take a little less on the road grader to get the excavator. And I think that that's certainly the case. I don't think that's unique to this contract. I think that could be said about any bit of work that we do anywhere, so.
Has there been any kind of problem with this company at all?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Do you talk to other towns to find out what their experience is?
Yeah, we do. We actually meet pretty regularly. We have a meeting scheduled in November with the folks at the consortium. And as a matter of fact, this contractor had to bid for the consortium.
Which of his businesses? Because he actually runs three vendor codes in our...
He's for mass pavement and reclamation. So he had that contract with them. They hired, they got another low bidder, which was, I don't know if I should say their name, that came in and did the work. They ended up throwing out that other contractor because he didn't show up to the jobs and wasn't available to do the work. But we meet regularly. Like I said, we've got a meeting coming up, and I shouldn't say regularly, that's an overstatement, at least annually, with our neighboring towns in the consortium to discuss contracts.
And there's never been an issue with another town and this particular contractor?
If there has been, I'm not aware of it. If you know of something, then I would...
Now, last year, because in the notes, we don't have the number. Do you know, do you remember the estimated value? What was the estimated versus the actual?
For the contract value? $350,000.
And what did we actually spend?
I would say, I don't have the value here, but I would say it's really close to $350,000.
And I really think something like that needs to be bid. Sorry.
Okay.
Again, I'm here to rebid it if you folks would like me to. That's not a problem.
Okay. Ted, there's no vote sheet here?
I'm sorry. I realized that.
Thank you.
I'd like, if there's only a single vote, I'd like to split out mass pavement. I vote two separate votes. Did you get three separate?
She did.
Okay. Do I do the first one? No, I think Paul does the first one.
No, that's okay. You can do the first one because that's the one you're going to agree with.
Oh, okay. I can do that. I'd make a motion to sign a contract extension with T.L. Edwards Incorporated for hot mix asphalt production, pavement installation, structure adjustment, and controlled cold milling. Do we have to put a number in there?
If you'd like, you could, an estimated value of 700...
Or an estimated value of $793,275.
I have a second on it. Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Hershey?
Are we talking about the same contractor? Does the sewer work for the town?
He has done sewer work for the town.
Yeah. And you just, you had no problem with him this year doing the work for the sewer?
You're talking about Edwards?
No, I'm not talking about Edwards. I'm talking to somebody else.
Okay. I'll call you back when that comes up.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right. If there's any other questions on this, the T.L. Edwards contract? That being said, any further...
And that has an extension of just, this is the second extension. So you could extend that next year without bidding that.
Okay. But that, we can discuss that next year?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor on Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Could you do that one, Mr.?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we vote to sign the contract extension with Seal Coating Inc. for micro-surfacing and random crack sealing.
For $444,345.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Hershey, you have a comment on micro-surfacing?
On the sewer work that was done down this year in that contractor that did the actual sewer work, put the pipes in down at Crow Point. You said you didn't have a problem with him, Mr. Edwards said?
I did not supervise that work. That work was supervised by the sewer commission. They utilized that contractor to do the work.
Okay. Well, as a taxpayer and a citizen of this town, I have a serious problem with that contractor. I think the people should realize that those people don't work for the sewer department anymore. It's my understanding. And they couldn't do the work and we had to get some of the contractor to do the work this year. Is that correct or not?
Randy is?
Somebody in town had to come up and step up the plate and finish the job because they were, had a lot of problems, should I say, doing the work or not?
This is Randy Sylvester, who supervises the sewer department.
We did have another contractor come in after they did the bulk of the work.
Yes.
There was an issue with the depth of the work.
Yes.
And the other contractor did come in and finish that portion of the job.
That's right. Okay. Let's stop right there. So why are we going to give this guy another contract? Why are we going with that? I think we should put this out to bid and get another contractor to see what we get. And the guy that was taken, put in that position to finish the work, I think he's a very reputable person. He's been in town for years. The town has been very lucky over the years to have them do the work for the town as a contractor. And I think that's the guy that should probably do the work from now on.
Okay.
He stepped up the plate.
Good. Thank you for that input. Okay. So there is a...
I have a question, though.
Sure.
You said you're satisfied and he's pulled off the job.
He wasn't pulled off the job.
Can you just explain what happened then?
The...
Briefly.
Briefly. It was a deep cut to get to the sewer pipe. He didn't have the equipment available. We got someone in there with the equipment available to do the work.
Okay. And that equipment wasn't on the list that we contracted with? Is that basically...
It may be on the list, but it was not available to him at that time.
Now, whose expense? Whose expense is that? Is that at his expense since he's the contractor?
No, that was at ours.
Did he get a, suffer a penalty for...
No, he was, he didn't, he didn't do the work. So he didn't get paid for the work.
Oh, that's okay. That's the same thing. So he spent all that time at Arpec. Okay, I'll inter...
Can you add this to the question?
Very short.
There was also, there was also a problem with this guy with safety, okay? In the trench, what you call that trench piece of equipment that goes in there.
Trench box.
Exactly. There was a problem with that there, too. There was also a problem with people in the neighborhood that live there have problems with this contractor also. So I think we need to get rid of this guy. Okay? It's a big piece, that's it.
Let me just say, Mr. Chairman, just really briefly. There's a, that contract was used, Randy and the sewer commission just issued a separate sewer contract, structured the very same way that our contract is structured. The only difference is by the foot, by the depth. This contractor was used to do that work. He did that work. But there's another contract that's in place that will revolve strictly around sewer. So maybe this is a better, maybe you like this guy better. I don't know. But the bottom line is that the contractor that you'll be seeing going forward doing sewer work will be a separate contract. It won't be this contractor anymore. This contract is not generally intended for sewer work. This contract is intended for us to build roads and to do drainage. They were in a bind. We were paving a road. A sewer had to be redone. The sewer commission did not have a contract in place. There was an issue with the sewer. So the time it would have taken to bid out and do the work that Randy's already done in order to get a sewer contractor in...
On what street?
On any street at that time. Would not, could not have happened. So that going forward, Randy's already made provisions so that there is a sewer contractor accustomed to doing sewer for any future work.
Okay.
I just have one comment there.
Very quickly, please. We're way behind.
You just gave this particular contractor the sewer job at the country club. No, right?
And if you, and if the board would like, we can certainly use the existing sewer contract that Randy now has in place. Because at the time that I, we start, we looked at that work, we did not have a sewer contractor. There was no one in place to do the work. And Massachusetts general laws do not allow for us to hire local contractors at our discretion. It's not up to us. I have no discretion when it comes to that. We put a bid out and it comes back. Doing something like that, there's a word for it. It's called collusion. And I can't, we can't be involved in that. We need to make sure that we maintain an open process when we bid these things out. All these contractors that Mr. Hershey's referring to are welcome to bid all these projects. And how many of these people bid the sewer project, local?
Three. No, no locals. No local contractors bid this.
Okay. Thank you both for that. Paul, you make a motion on the last one.
Sure. I'll move to sign the extension for mass pavement, reclamation, for equipment rental, and labor services.
For $348,875. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. I need to make two comments here. I have nothing...
I'll give you the floor to do that.
Okay.
All right. Ray, is there anything else that you need on this? I know we're holding you up, Randy. I understand that. Okay. All right. Irma?
I have nothing against the contractor. But I feel this should have been bid out. And if this particular contractor won the bid, I have no problem. And secondly, based on what I said last December, I found out yesterday about 2:00 in the afternoon that there was going to be no bid, that you were just coming back. And I'm extremely disappointed to find out 24 hours before.
Let me say, was there a vote last year?
No. This was, and everybody agreed that...
We did not take a vote. We have a town engineer who's responsible for this. I trust him to make it. If we don't like his decisions, he's not the town...
Then somebody should have told, when I had this in the minutes, somebody should have come back and said, look, this is what... I should have been able to have a conversation with Roger before having it in public today.
So noted.
May I just respond briefly? I know nothing about last year's discussion. But I'm satisfied with the explanation provided by Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Sylvester, addressed the questions that I had. And it seems as if this goes out to rebid, the cost for this stuff is logically going to be higher than it was two years ago. In any event, next year, it's got to be all out to fresh eyes. So that's why I voted the way I did.
That was my, as well. The price of asphalt has gone up every year since I've been a selectman. And if I can lock in a price that's two years old in this day and age, it would be foolish to take the risk, given the amount, it's a million dollars we're talking tonight. That's, I don't have that million dollars. So that's why I...
But we did that with T.L. Edwards and Seal Coating.
And we have $348,000 here. The risk for that to go up is something I think I don't want to take. And you can disagree, and that's, you're right?
I do.
That's fine. That's why we took the vote. Thank you. Roger, Randy, you can say, stay right there.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation on Derby Street, too.
That was very good. Thank the engineer again for us putting him through the mill with questions.
Yeah. Let me, Randy Sylvester and Jeff Hanrahan from our Department of Public Works are about to give us a discussion. And in the audience is the, one of our, I know a concerned individual, our fire chief, on the issue of the George Washington Town Forest management. And this has to do with potential fire hazard. And I say potential, but it needs to be addressed. And we've asked Randy to come in since he gets, he's at the end of the food chain and is asked to fix everything that we can. So if you would maybe bring us up to date on this.
Yeah. Well, basically, we're here tonight to give a presentation on the town forest and the condition of the red pines in the town forest. Jeff Hanrahan, DPW General Foreman, and I put this presentation together to make the public aware of the issues in the town forest. And there are several. Jeff's done most of the work. So we put it together, and I'm going to hand it over to him.
Thank you.
The George Washington Town Forest is 197.6 acres of various species of both native and plantation grown trees, such as the red pine. For many years, the forest was well-maintained by thinning out dead trees and brush cutting and the understory growth. Over the years, as budget restrictions affected time and resources, the forest management was reduced to fire road and hazard management. The decline of the red pine, by my observation and valuation, was first observed about five years ago. And within the past 18 months, the decline in mortality has increased significantly. This can be seen in the various pictures taken this past July of the forest. In the past three or four years, the weather has caused hurricanes, microbursts, superstorms, and northeasters. And I often wonder what effects this had on the demise of the red pines. This is just not a local problem. All across the state and the country, this has been a problem. Pictures that we're about to see are aerial pictures of the forest taken from different locations. The diagnostic report. The diagnosis report was detailed as red pine scale, pine shoot beetle, and needle cast. And there's many microorganisms also involved in that.
Just one thing is, we, Jeff actually got in touch with the UMass Extension Service in UMass, and they sent out a representative, Nicholas Brazzi.
Brazzi.
Brazzi. And actually, we have pictures here. But he went and identified the problems of the pine shoot beetle, pine scale, red pine scale, and the rest of them. And then Jeff, you can take it from here.
This is a view of the town forest from Sawmill Pond in the south over Charles Street. You can see the various stages of decline in mortality within those pictures there.
Yeah. Explain where the...
That actually is on Charles Street. It's an aerial view looking from the pond on Charles Street, actually, into the forest towards South Hingham.
The brownish areas are the trees that are affected and are in decline. What time of year is this?
This was in July.
Wow.
It was, actually, it was probably the best time to take it because it was really highlighted by the growth. Right, exactly.
Actually, we...
Are they dead?
Jeff had...
They're dead.
Jeff had noted this earlier in the spring and asked me if he could get a flyover. And I agreed. So this is, he hired a helicopter, went up there and had some fun taking pictures.
Were in enough seats or I would have invited some of you.
Me? I'm really bummed.
It was an unbelievable day, too. You can see how clear it is because you can see Hingham Harbor. But that's, that's a view looking north towards Hingham Harbor.
Listen, I don't take up much room. I could have fit in that helicopter. This is not good. This is beautiful.
This is Anderson Road looking north. Anderson Road is up in South Hingham off of Prospect Street. And you can see that, how close actually this is to that neighborhood, the degree there. You can actually see in the tops of the trees what, you know, degree of mortality there is in those. There's still, those are pretty late. They're still holding on to their needles, most of those. If you look through, a lot of the other ones, they're completely gone. Most of the needle is gone. This is Nicholas Brazzi of UMass Extension doing research This is Nicholas Brazzi of UMass Extension doing research on the different diseases that the trees have.
And explain what he's found there.
He found, actually, several things that were pretty evident, the red pine scale and the pine shoot beetle. And there's a lot of different things that come into play after that that really affect them. But the main factor is the red pine scale. That's contributed to, you know, the death of these trees. This has caused also this root disease, Amrylla. It's a fungus that's present in the lower stem and the root flare going into the ground. And this causes the tree to pretty much completely go. This is really, you need a microscope to see what's in there, but that is actually-- the red pine scale is in there. What it does is it chokes out the growth on the needles, and there's actually a number of different things in there. There's some beetle in there also. The pine shoot beetle was in that, but you need a microscope to really see it well.
Jeff, just before you get-- for my edification, I'm not a-- I'm not a tree guy, but it obviously affected red pines. Are there other locations in town that have red pines?
That was the only one that was notable, is the town forest. Around town, there's locations all around town, single, you know, three, four trees. They're on their way-- A good area that was, you know, affected by that or bad, or whatever you want to look at, would be up off French Street. That whole area was planted-- A lot of them were planted by the government years ago when they took out gravel and other materials and so forth, and they replanted those--
On the low side?
In those areas.
Excuse me?
On the low side of French Street?
Yeah, it would be actually on the west side. French Street, probably from, I'd say, opposite Cranberry, that whole area in there.
And it's private property?
They're all on private property there, but most of them are gone. There was a lot of them in there at one time. But they failed everywhere as far as it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, the problem is that they're a serious threat to the public. They're both potential fire hazard and, you know, falling hazard, hitting people and so forth, that are within the town forest. The ones that are probably within 60 feet of any of the roads and paths should be alleviated, and the ones that are of potential for fire should be taken out also. It's relatively low right now, the risk for fire, especially since we've had the rain, but I mean, that depends on the weather completely. It's completely a weather-driven factor. The method of removal on these would be to mechanically harvest these, and what they'd go in there with is basically shears, mechanical shears. And I don't know if you've ever seen them on TV or anything, but they're pretty quick. And it-- There's a large number of trees in there. It would be basically a long-term project to try to do it any other way. This is the approximate cost for what we need to have done. It would be about $2,500 bucks per acre, $2,500 per acre. The total cost is about $22,500.
So in-- I don't think there's a-- in future management.
Further valuation of the forest would be determined after the removal of the pines that are affected now. Basically, the clearing of the fire roads and the clearing of the trails would be part of that future forest management program. And that's something that would have to be budgeted into the future to maintain everything that we, you know, have going on in there, such as fire trails and, you know, the travel trails for people.
So basically, what we're proposing here is, well, we're going to have to do it, but cut back from all the trails and roads, at least 60 feet. We will leave some red pines up for habitat, for wildlife, but it's to take the-- if anything falls, take the risk away from anyone using those trails. And the other thing is, when this work is going to be done, we don't really know how long it's going to take. We're estimating anywhere from two to three weeks. We would have to close down the forest during that time. We'd post it and let everybody know, so.
You have an estimated cost. Do you have the money to do this?
I don't.
Okay.
At this point in time, it's not within the DBW budget. Like we do with all our budgets, we'll ask them to try to work it throughout the year, but if not, we'll have to either ask for a reserve fund transfer or identify other areas of the budget. But we do have budget capacity during fiscal 2014, right now.
Okay. I'll just add, Chief Duff, do you have anything you want to add?
First of all, my question is, 87 grand, we're dry fire chief. First of all, it's my professional opinion that the risk of fire danger up there is high, not low, especially after what we've seen that's happened over in the Blue Hills in the last 14 days, where the fire service has been in there every day of the week, even when it's raining out. That's how dry it is out. So we have a significant fire danger there. But I'm a little uncertain, Randy, you-- The picture-- And if you could put it up there, it would be helpful. Let us see a picture of the dead trees themselves, an aerial view. Are you talking about cutting all those dead trees down or just cutting a buffer around them and leaving the dead trees that are in the center of that concentration of dead trees?
Would be leaving up whatever the footage is from the trails and the roads up for habitat life, yes.
So there's still going to be a lot of dead trees standing?
There will be. UMass Extension Service had mentioned to us, because we particularly asked that question, and their answer to that, they said, without the trees, there's probably more chance of fire, because once-- Once you take the trees out and the overgrowth, there's no shade to the undergrowth. And as we were there, what, about a month ago, it hadn't rained much, but it was very wet underneath. His recommendation was to keep, you know, as many trees up as we could, other than safety purposes, to keep shade on the undergrowth, to keep the moisture in the forest. That's what his recommendation was.
Yeah, yeah. I think you just need to know that there are still going to be a lot of dead trees that will be standing for a while that do pose a significant fire risk. And, you know, you don't think about the types of fires that we see that occur on the West Coast every year, where fire is actually crowned, where they go up in the top of the tree canopy and take off. There's a big potential for that happening here. So I'm concerned about the number of dead trees there. Personally, I'd like to see them all cut down, whether that's beyond the means of the community and whether with regards to reforestation, that's a good move or a bad move. I'm not the expert on that. We've got a potential-- A very serious fire potential there. And in my opinion, the trees should be removed and should be cut and removed.
Apparently, Randy, you've gotten professional advice that contradicts the chief's-- Not contradicts, but gives reason as to why you wouldn't cut everything out.
Correct, correct.
So I would-- I think maybe if we could have a conversation with the--
I'm not going to oppose the project, Mr. Chairman. I'm just expressing my opinion.
No, I know you're not. Given the number of times you've mentioned it to me, I know absolutely you won't oppose it, you will not. The question is, I think the chief makes a good comment. Should we take them all down? And what's the--
We've actually gone so far-- I've actually gone so far as to notify in writing all my mutual aid partners. So on the outside chance that the Hingham companies are tied up and Noel goes in there or Hall goes in there, they're aware of this problem as well. We have developed a hard-hitting plan for Wampatack State Park, where if we-- on what we call a Class IV, Class V high fire danger day, if we get a call anywhere in the park, whether it be in Hingham, Coasette, Noel, and Citu, Hall sends an engine, and Hingham sends an engine, a brush truck, and ambulance, or Shift Command, or Noel sends an engine, or a brush truck, and an ambulance, Coasette sends an engine, a brush truck, because we want to get in there and hit it hard, hit the fire hard. I'm thinking about asking my partners to extend that courtesy to that area, too, but there is a real problem there. Thank you.
Paul, you had a question?
What's the plan to keep this from spreading? I mean, could the entire town forest become denuded with this disease?
Well, this is-- These trees are red pines, and you can see the white pines within the red pines. White pines aren't affected by this disease.
Well, what percentage of the town forest is red pine?
Probably that percent.
You're looking at most of it right there.
Oh, so all the red pines--
There is some more, you know, green, but there's not a lot of green left.
So over time, the plan is just to create a buffer around it so that when they fall, they don't hurt anybody? Is that the deal?
Basically, yes.
And you're going to let the understory take over somewhat, too? Okay, that was the other-- That was the other point that he actually brought up, too, was that the fact that if-- The more you go in and remove, the more possibility of damaging what is going to come up back up, and that is, you know, a fire hazard also.
What would grow there?
Actually, what's growing now is, in certain areas, the pines are taking over where the red pines were, and some of the hardwoods are coming in.
The white pines.
The white pines. I mean, they're coming in where the red pines were, and hardwoods are coming in.
This is a cycle--
Oh, definitely.
--of nature that we're witnessing.
Okay, Irma?
Have you talked to Abby Piersall in the Conservation Commission about this?
We have a meeting, I believe it's on the 18th, or their next ConCon meeting, to discuss this, because we'll need permissions from them, because we're within 100-foot buffer zone of some of the wetland.
Which I didn't realize there was wetlands in there. I should have, but I was not aware there's as much. That's-- Abby was telling me how much wetlands is in there. Also, can you, at that meeting, maybe can you ask them if you could dip into their conservation fund for the trails and stuff the people trails? You've already done that?
I haven't done that, but in order to get in there and attack this problem, we've been in there taking care of the trails.
I went over there, because I couldn't quite-- And you've done a nice job.
Thank you.
Getting the trails in.
What you don't have today is you don't have a request for a reserve fund transfer, because we're really not asking to necessarily proceed with the work yet. We want to go to Conservation here, what Conservation has to say, but we wanted to brief the selectmen of this, because we think it's an important issue, and we'll be back to you within a few weeks.
Okay. Mr. Hershey?
Has anybody here-- This sounds very good. I'm encouraged by this. Has anybody here been up to the town forest in the last couple of weeks?
Me.
Anyone here been walking it?
I've been in there almost every day.
Okay. Well, as you know, then, you cannot get a fire truck in there. All the trails are compacted by all these trees falling down. You have a very tough time walking in there, okay? You would never get a fire truck in there. I just want to let that know.
Okay. Now, that-- The chief has made that--
I was up there Tuesday.
Yeah, the chief had made that clear to me when we had a discussion on this. I think it was Tuesday was the third or fourth time we've talked about this. And so I appreciate Randy getting marshaled to address this question. Okay, is there anything else you need from us?
No, we're all set.
Oh, I want to put my reservation in for the next time you go up in a chopper.
You're in.
I'm going.
I'll fly. I'll be the pilot.
I'm out.
I'm out of town.
I'm out.
Okay.
County fires?
No worries. That's where we could put it to you, is good comment. Okay.
Lot of nice work in your spare time, right?
Thanks, Randy.
Ted, if you could put the lights back up. Thank you, Harry.
It's open.
There we go. Okay, we're very much behind. Sorry about that. We have had a discussion, and this is a continuation of an ongoing discussion, on liquor license renewal fees, and we're getting close to the date as to when this should happen. So I'll start with-- I'll start with Irma, maybe. I think each of us have had-- Well, I have comments, so Irma, if you'd be so good as to give us your thoughts.
Couple things. I agree that we need to go to $4,000 eventually. I also agree with all of the good people, and I see Christian here tonight, and--
We're not on the air.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Bob, could you repeat? We're having technical difficulties.
We're recording. We're recording. We're not on the air.
Okay.
I do agree with all the restaurateurs that joined us last week that a five-week notice is a little tough to double your fees. So I could certainly go to $3,000 this year with notice now that next year we're going to four. The alternative-- I really want to recognize Sharon for the work that she's done, which I guess was prompted by Ted, to see what else is out there.
The whole office worked on it. Betty and Sharon did most of the work.
That a sliding scale based on the number of seats in the restaurant, and if you want me to pick one for you guys to kind of bat around, I would go with number three. I think that where we've got 26 restaurants, we really want to encourage the smaller restaurants-- I'm going to call them Mom and Pop-- to stay in town, and I know we, better than cooking guys, we go out and try and patronize the smaller ones and also the big ones. So I like this sliding scale, because I think it gives recognition that we want to encourage small business, we want to encourage all business, but we recognize that small business has challenges more so than big business. So with that, I'll leave it.
And just to clarify for the public, the reference that you made to option three is where we've broken it down by seats. If the facility has less than 100 seats, and there are nine of those, the fee would increase by $250 this year, and if it's 100 to 101 to 175, it would increase to $2,500, a $500 increase. And over 175 seats, of which there's 10, they would increase to 3,000. And that's the option three proposal that Irma just outlined.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just have some information I should have-- I apologize, should have done this upfront. We entertain this because we like to maintain our fee structures, not at the top, not necessarily at the bottom, but be-- We use a 20-town comparison, and that's been the approach we've taken, and that's how this process started. And the good thing that came out of this is, I think what Irma just said, is we have a seat comparison. That is another way to not hit everyone the same. But I'm troubled by one issue that, as I dug into this, a couple of learning for me. There is-- First of all, the police cooperation with the restaurants is much improved, according to the chief. Are there issues? Certainly. But one of the things that I found out is that, for example, at the Derby Shops, they pay for the police patrols that are necessary during the holiday season, and that on Friday and Saturday nights, the shipyard folks are paying for a pretty police presence as well.
A detail officer.
That's an officer. So that certainly mitigates some of the-- Some of the expense, not all. But in looking at the entire package of restaurants, and not only what they give us on the fees for licenses, one of the things we're very appreciative of, and while it's not their money, they are the collecting vehicle, is the meals tax. And the meals tax equates to $650,000 a year as a result. So I did some horsebacking. I did a little mathematical projections here, and I said, okay, if we're getting $650,000 a year, and that equates to .75% of a fee, or 75 cents on $100, then that means what's 100% of the income that's in those restaurants? And when I horsebacked it, I get to a number of about 80 million. And I asked the town administrator to double-check my math, and he got the same number. Am I right, Ted?
Yes, but just to be clarified, it's not for the 26 liquor--
It's for everybody.
It's all the food establishments, and I think we have approximately 60, 65.
So that-- I said, ah, so I understand that. But then I went, and in the course of the tax classification hearing, which we just heard, I went pulling sheets on the various restaurants. And as a result of that, on the restaurants, and I looked at all of what their assessed valuations are, because that's another side of the equation. And as you all-- As we talked about tax classification a couple of weeks ago, the business side, the commercial side of assessment, has a reduction factor in their-- in their factor, as well as an increase factor, and that's income. So they factor in, based on a formula, their income, which equates to their property value. So you can see over a period of history, and I went back 10 years, just what has happened to their performance. And are they doing better or worse? Their property values-- The property value itself doesn't increase as much, but their income does. And I saw some restaurants where they appeared to be following the rules, meaning their income was going down, and they got a reduction, and when their income went up, they got an increase. But I saw many restaurants where there was no change in that component, and that concerned me over the fact that, since we've had this shift, as we just heard tonight, from 84% to 89% on the residential side, and a shrinkage on the commercial side from 16% to 11%, I was concerned that there may be inequity, and more importantly, when I looked at the total, I didn't get myself completely to $80 million. Now, that was a Bruce Rubuffel look, and I'm not an assessor. So I was concerned that we may have a discrepancy, because the third thing I found was that these are self-reported numbers, and that our process on assessment doesn't validate the income side of the number when the-- When the, in this case, the restaurateur, he files a form, I forget, DA 38 or something like that, and we get an assessment, we get a number on income. In some cases, for a period of years, the number was the same. So, I was concerned about, I'm not sure of the process, so I pursued that with the assessment department, and in the course of that pursuit, I found out that, no, they cannot validate the numbers that we receive, and perhaps that's why there's an issue here. And then the last point is, when I talked to a number of them, they all recognized that we haven't done anything in a while. And that's okay, but I'm concerned about, I've got two systems here, a fee system, a meals tax system, and then we have an assessment process, and the numbers in total may not match. And I'd like to better understand that before I start adding a burden, because I know they've all explained, and I think their numbers in some cases can confirm that they've been suffering over this. So, I'm not inclined at the moment to do anything this year until we can reconcile those differences, with the understanding that certainly now, their big concern was being on notice that we're going to do it. And I think Irma made that point very, very correctly, that we're going to do something. The question is, I want to make sure we're right when we do it, and we're consistent. So, that's kind of my position, I'm sorry for going a little bit out of water, but I did want to put that point forward. So, I'm not inclined to do anything at this point. Leave it as it is, and I appreciate all the good work that was done, but I'd like to get reconciliation on the total commercial package for this issue. If you have any comments, Mr. Admin.
Well, I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the assessors have a request for special valuation services for commercial properties, to make sure that what we're assessing is accurate. If we under-assess a property, that means other people are paying for that burden. If we over-assess, obviously that means that that property is paying unfairly. And, you know, the accuracy of our assessments is a concern with our commercials because we use a different model. We can't go to a history of sales data that we have that is much more common with residential, we have 7,000 residential parcels, and so we can look at sales data, we can look at, even if the houses are in different areas of the town, we can adjust based on areas, we can adjust based on square footages, to get a much better idea of what a residential house costs. A business is not just the four walls, it's what's going on in there. And so, you know, it takes a little bit more work to get to there, and we are going to look at that value, because one of the things that I'm concerned about is that you have one goal, which is tax relief, and you have another activity that might be competing against that, as we're shifting value from the businesses to, as we're lowering the value of the businesses, the effect is the tax rates rising, and the residential community is picking up more of that burden. And that's essentially what you've seen in the last four years, is you've gone from 84% to 89%. That's a 5% swing on a $5.5 billion valuation.
That's a lot.
It's a lot.
That's a lot, too, the, I mean, the whole, you know, the assumption we started in the tax classification study was that the numbers were somewhat correct, and as I dug into it as a result of this issue, that it said, don't do anything now, that just reinforce it till you're sure that the numbers are correct.
Can Ted put together the numbers that you just kind of went through with us?
Sure.
Because I really, that's fascinating.
Yeah, you look at, I can, I meant to bring the sheet, I have it, I summarize it, I have it by restaurant, and you'll see some look funnies. And I don't mean to criticize the restaurants, there are some that have gone up, and some that have gone down, and I...
I can give you some of those numbers, but I think the totality of what Bruce is asking is not going to be able to be accomplished in the next two weeks, given a couple factors. One, this is my budget season, and you guys have a major deadline for me to get your budget in about three weeks. A, and I know Bruce, I know you often tell me this, I do sleep at night, so I know I have extra time. But, you know, the work product would suffer, but more importantly, the amount of work necessary to get this data is several months. It's not easy to get this kind of data, and to sit and compare, I mean, I've just asked the assessor this afternoon to give me the income sheets that have been filed by all the restaurants, you know, in the community, so I can match those to what we know is coming in in meals tax, and make sure that we're getting the same data. That's going to take some time to go through that. So, you know, if you're not sure of a rate because of that, then I would say I'm going to need a couple of months to get to that.
I'm sorry, so, thank you for that. Paul, this is new information, so I apologize for that, but...
I really haven't departed from my original perspective here, in terms of the need to increase the fee. However, I am cognizant of the fact that the little guy takes a disproportionate hit if it's a fee across the board, regardless of the size of your facility. I think that the gentleman from Hingham Square Cafe was very persuasive in that regard, because he acknowledged that it is appropriate to increase it, but to the extent that we were proposing for everyone, that would have been difficult. So, I would join Ms. Lauder with what she spoke to. I think the self-reporting to determine what your property taxes are going to be, it definitely needs to be checked out, especially if there's a decrease on the commercial properties that falls on the shoulders of the residential taxpayers. But I think that that's a separate issue, and for now, I think we should just continue forward with the license increase. It's a modest one, doesn't reflect the...
You're saying number three, that as she discussed, is your suggestion?
I'm willing to second her motion.
Okay, so is that a motion, Irma, are you ready?
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
No, so the vote is two to one.
Could we also put on the table, where the fees haven't been touched in eight years, that between now and June 1st, I'll let you sleep a little bit, Ted, that a review be taken of all the fees?
We're actually undergoing that right now. The reason we brought you these was because you have a deadline.
We have a deadline.
You have to do these now or next year.
But if we can get everything together by June 1st, that gives everybody six months.
We've discussed that in the office, and we'll prepare something for you with all our fees.
And then that gives everybody enough notice as to what we're going to do, if anything, if any of the fees need to be changed.
Okay. Okay.
Bruce, somebody in the back.
Yes.
Just real quick, I need to come to the mic because I can't hear you at home. So, it was 175 seats or more, it's 3,000?
Who are you? Who are you?
I'm sorry. My name's Ken Robichaud, I'm the general manager of Scarlet Oak Tavern.
Okay, let me read to you what the proposal is. If you're under 100 seats, the increase would be $250. If you're between 101 and 175 seats, the seat would be, the increase would be $500. And if you're over 175 seats, of which there are 10 restaurants, the increase would be $3,000.
No, he's not increasing, he goes to...
Two, sorry, $1,000.
Increase $1,000.
$1,000, thank you, Irma. And the discussion is, obviously we're going to relook at this, you know, and I don't want you to misinterpret, I just don't think, I look at the, all of the tax implications for everybody. My colleagues are looking at it differently, and that's certainly the way they should. But I want to look at the total package, so...
I mean, on record, I think it should increase, but I just, you know, think, it was 2,000, then all of a sudden it was 4,000, it's like, what happened to 3,000? That's why, I mean, this is the first time I've come out, so I had another gentleman...
There were a number of your colleagues who...
Yes.
Yeah, this wasn't...
Mr. Chairman, could you please repeat those numbers once more?
Surely. The proposed increase that passed two to one was for seats under 100, $250. For seats between 100 and 175, of which there are seven restaurants, the increase would be $500. And for all those over 175, for which there are 10, the increase would be $3,000.
$1,000.
$1,000. I made the same mistake.
You really want, you really want $3,000 additional dollars to these guys?
So, it would be $1,000. Okay? Selectmen's goals and objectives. Mr. Alexiades, you gave us a sheet that we have, and we recognize that there are some still on the, just to remind everybody, we have the Aquarian Water Study, that continues, tax relief, that is something. The South Shore Industrial Park in South Hingham, and the Field Study Committee, and the asset and those things, pardon me? I'm sorry, there's a field, it's been a, it's just the ad hoc field study committee to look at current and future demands for sports and activities, and that's underway as well. But with the issues, and then, of course, we had an issue last year as well called Asset Management of Town-Owned Buildings, and that is underway as we speak. But there are three other proposed issues, the 3A Corridor, the FEMA Flood Plane Review, which we'll talk about in Selectmen Reports, and Enhanced Citizen Communication is, as the town administrator heard us talk last time. So, I think the list, I'm fearful, the one thing I'm concerned about is, you know, pretty soon, you have so many things on the list, and everything's an objective, and there are certain things that have higher priority than others, so that would be my only comment on this. I don't want it to get too big, but I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Haley, any comments?
I share your sentiments. I served on the planning board for almost 20 years. We didn't do something like this, although we did have initiatives from time to time that we brought before the town. If we, you know, address these enumerated goals in good faith and with the effort that the town expects us, I think we get our plate pretty full.
Yeah, I think there are certainly initiatives, buildings that should be addressed, we have an issue with contaminated area on town property that needs to be addressed. We have a lot of those, but they're not of this nature. The 3A Corridor is the linkpin, and I know, I've heard that we want to get something started, and I've asked Ted if he could start to pursue that. We want to get something started on the waterfront while we're waiting for 3A, because if that doesn't get started, we'll be further behind on that, and the FEMA...
Although, if I could just interrupt you, I really strongly believe that the 3A Corridor is going to drive a lot of what happens down there.
I agree, I absolutely agree. You got to do that first. I understand that. If there's anything we can do, I mean, I heard you've expressed some interest in some field artillery cannons in the park that need to be preserved, and that's part of this project, but it's something we could do, it's a step if we can persuade the CPC to do something like that. But you're right, I'm just teeing up that this, to build a, to get started on the good work that DJ McKinnon did for us, is something we should, of course, entertain. So, that 3A corridor is the first step of a big project, and that needs to be due. And I understand DJ has told us that he needs time to raise the money and all the rest of it, so let's think about that. Anyway, that's just editorial comment. Irma, do you have any?
I think all of these are worthy to do. I gave Ted a much more detailed breakdown of each one of them. Aquarian, I didn't, because that one has now got a life of its own in court. And I asked him to share it with the two of you. And, no, yes?
I haven't had a chance to.
Okay. It's just a very detailed breakdown of how we might approach each of these. The Fields Study is started, and I think that will not take very long to finish. And also, the facilities management, the way Ted is proposing it, as at least a first step, that should be done. So, I would not like to see any of these dropped.
Okay, I agree.
And the Townwide Technology Plan, I think that should be flopped around to a Townwide Technology Plan with one of the goals under it, the Enhanced Citizen Communication, and you'll see that in the documents. I'll send to both of you the document that I sent to Ted.
Okay, gotcha. Well, now, send it through Ted.
He's already got it, but I'll do it again.
I'll send it to him, I just haven't had a chance to meet with him.
He hasn't talked to us about it. He said you had something, but he hadn't had a chance to...
Because Townwide Technology Plan underneath it would be the new website, which I went up on a couple different town websites today, and I guess that's the in thing to do, two towns that I regularly visit have new websites. And the enhanced communication, just the different touchpoints now using social media, there's a number of towns doing that. And one of the more exciting venues that are out there are ventures. A lot of towns are now letting their citizens report directly issues that they find in town, and Boston started it. But it is spreading all over and...
Don't we already have that, though?
No, not from your smartphone.
The citizens don't send emails to us?
They do, but what Irma is talking about is, one of the programs is called Click It, Fix It. And, you know, again, what we have to look at, and that's why we want to, you know, look at technology, first understand how we're going to deploy it and how we're going to staff it.
Well, what it is, too.
Yeah, correct, because I know that frequently I've heard requests from the board and from other boards in town that they want to do this kind of activity. I need to give you a price associated with that, because once we step out into the social media world and we start communicating, we're going to get communications back, and the citizens are going to expect us to respond on a regular basis, and I need to make sure that we are capable of doing that with our existing structure.
But I think you're making a good suggestion. It's a bigger problem than the traditional way we're dealing with it.
Yep.
And I think that's a good suggestion. I think what the lesson came home, if I could jump ahead to Selectmen Reports, last Friday, Betty and I were back and forth with the federal and the state government trying to set up a meeting for last night. And, you know, we got a good turnout, considering we missed the Boston Globe, you know, we missed the presentation last week for the publication for the Journal, and the Ledger gave us a little bit of a notice, but if we didn't have a social, if we had a social way of communicating, we could have done a better broadcast mechanism, which we couldn't do.
I guarantee you that we will reach more people when we move into the social media aspect. There's no, there's just no refuting that print media readership is going on the decline, and electronic media is on the incline. It's just, it's a fact of life. That's why every print media is now online, too. And, yes.
That's not to say we don't have some excellent reporting.
Yeah, please, yeah, that's not a valuation decision. You know, it's not a valuation judgment on my part, it's just a fact of reality, that's what's happening in the world, and we're missing communications, and we need to start thinking about it.
And we also can't forget the people that really deal still with paper and mail.
Absolutely, absolutely. Like, when we did the FEMA discussions, not only did we put it up on our webpage, but, you know, we put it on the bulletin board on the second floor so that people can see it. You know, when we communicate, we had the discussion with the restaurants, we actually sent them a letter, snail mail letter, because, you know, we needed to get it there.
Okay, so, it sounds like we need to look at Irma's suggestions.
Yeah, Irma's giving them a bunch...
These things are underway, and that's clear. We agree, I think conceptually, there's some reordering to occur.
I think that's one thing we'd have to look at, is a prioritization. I mean, this is a fairly ambitious list of eight goals. Again, some of them are part of operations already, and they're never going to go away, asset management, you know, field management, that's never going to end. Obviously, we hope that some of these other ones will come to a conclusion at some point in time, but some of them are going to be incorporated into our daily activities indefinitely.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any, we have no appointments this evening, I do not think, or do we? No appointments this evening?
I just have one thing in a report. I know that you folks have, you know, started the discussion of a Plymouth County Committee. I've received notification from the Plymouth County Commissioners that they'd like us to participate in a solid waste initiative. I've spoken with Randy Sylvester, both Randy and I concur that it would be worthwhile for us to participate. It's a discovery issue, we don't know where it's going to end, but perhaps we can get a lower cost to remove our solid waste. Right now, as you know, we transfer it down to CMAS, and they would like to talk about whether or not we can group together a large part of Plymouth County and get a better price for our trash hauling. We have no commitments, but they would like to see us participate, and I think that's a wise thing to do.
I went to the meeting with Randy, and it is very ambitious. It is a good thing to at least try, and there's no hope, that if we don't like it, we can back out. And one of your good friends has jumped in, like... And one of your good friends has jumped in, like, number one, Mayor Sue Kay.
Oh, is she?
She is...
Yeah, she had mentioned that to me. Yep. Yep, she is.
And she was there at the meeting speaking to this.
That's good.
So, I'd like, just, I wanted to advise the board, I'll be signing a letter to that effect if it's okay.
Sure. It's all right with me.
It's fine with me. It's good.
Why would Sue Kay go to that meeting? She's from...
Because she signed, right. They're reaching out.
Okay.
There, I think there's this view, Paul, that we're all doing, in some cases, we're all doing the same service, and what's the cost to us? And could we, could, could we collaborate on some, you know, it's taking the dispatch center concept into other avenues of government. In some cases, it could work, and some it may not, but it's certainly worthy of pursuit.
What are the other things they talked about at that meeting? And I'm probably going to use the wrong term. Plymouth County is looking for a piece of land, and it may be in Plymouth, to set up a disposal center for agri...
Yeah, it's yard waste.
Well, no, it's food.
Oh, so they're also doing...
But it's got a fancy name for it.
An aerobic digester?
It could...
Actually, it's along those terms. I can't think of it right now off the top of my head, but...
Can you spell that?
I'd have to ask my daughter.
So, yes, they're looking because there's a great call for that now.
That's what I've heard.
I think there's going to be regulations that require it.
Yes. What we're doing is trying to take things out of the waste stream because the more we take out, the less we landfill, the less we burn in an energy transfer facility. So, the more we can recycle, the cheaper it is for everybody.
Okay. Just along the lines, we have one more seat on that committee that we would...
Correct. And we've been advertising for it, we haven't found someone yet.
No.
On the what?
On the Plymouth County...
We have four of those.
Four. We'd like to have, they're anxious to get going, and we need a...
I think I may know someone else suggested it for you folks to consider.
That would be great. Okay, we'll do that on the 21st, and then they can get started. There's no timeline for them, but it is something that should be... Is there anything else, Mr. Administrator, to report? Mr. Healy?
Yes, I'd just like to let people know that myself and the Veteran Services Officer, Mr. German, working on the, finding out more information about the rusting hulls of iron that are also, at one point in the country's history, field guns. So, we've contacted the curators at the Marine Corps Museum in Quantico, where they have a static exhibit there, and they've indicated that they're very interested in helping out, so we should be getting some more information on the pieces and where we could get potential parts.
I'll send you everything I have on those guns.
That would be appreciated. Thank you.
John Thomas went in, because we tracked them down as far as the New York, Upstate New York Armory. He actually took a rubbing of the, and we know what they are, because somebody sent me an email with that. We know where they came from. What we don't know is how they got there.
Probably after the Second World War, I imagine.
Somebody just kind of dropped them off part of a yard sale?
I think from the arsenal in Albany?
It's not Albany, it's Upstate.
North, it's north of...
Waterbury.
Yeah, it's not, oh, good. It's fascinating, and then...
All right. Wait a minute. You're going to keep us later?
No, I'm not. I'm just here to add some, some information. That was the...
This is Keith German, the Veterans Agent.
Keith German, Veterans Officer, that's the Watervillet Arsenal in New York.
Yeah.
Correction, it's Watervilleet.
Yes. I don't have that extraordinary pronunciation, but...
Very sensitive about that part of the country.
But we have contacted them also, as they, the registered owner of, of those pieces of artillery. It's 37 Mike Mike, 37 millimeter anti-tank guns. And I do have a picture of what that would or could look like on a cement-type pedestal, exactly like we have it over at G.A.R. Hall, which took some time to restore also. So, I'll pass that around. That weapon, or that piece of artillery, we're fortunate enough to have the 10-5A Transportation Company, and every so often, they'll, they come up, a local contractor here in Hingham, Calvi &amp; Sons takes that down on a hitch, because they have some sort of special hitch that it needs, and they take it down to the armory, and the guys, during their drill weekends, restore that over time. So, that's been done, but that has never been done to the, to the cannons down at Victory Park. And as Selectmen Healy and I were reminiscing about it, I can remember as a young, as a young man, that those pieces actually turned. There was a, what they call a worm drive screw. You could train the weapon, and as a young kid, I found that fascinating, to climb around and climb aboard those, but that's potentially of what that could look like.
Pictures came from me.
Oh, I noticed. Oh, good.
Unless, do you want to say it?
Okay. All right, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith, for that update. And while you're here, I just, I'll use that as an opportunity, tomorrow afternoon at 3:30, the governor has signed a proclamation that allows us to name a, the Beale Street and 3A Corridor there after Sergeant Boris Demko, and it's open to the public.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. That'll be at 3:30 tomorrow, the Sergeant Boris Demko Memorial Park.
Right.
Will be signed by the Department of Transportation, and I think Secretary DePaolo will be there also. So, that'll be open to the public, and we highly recommend that you attend. That is a gold star, Hingham family. That sergeant was killed in a bombing raid over Germany during World War II, and was highly decorated, so it's something we should all be proud of.
That's very good. Nice recognition, for sure. And then, of course, on Monday at 11 o'clock at Sandborne Auditorium, we have the annual Veterans Day Memorial.
Correct. We're having a, the observance at 11 a.m., as you mentioned, Sandborne Auditorium. The guest speaker, or the principal speaker there will be Hingham resident Commander Charles, Commander Jeffrey Garnier, who's a U.S. Coast Guard commander. We will also be having an 8:30 to 10 a.m. breakfast that's open to all military and veterans and their families at the Senior Center, Department of Elder Services here in Town Hall.
Right here. Good. Well, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more thing I want to...
Sure.
So, sorry to keep you, Bruce.
That's okay. I'm on overtime.
I would just like to...
Double time? Double time?
Invite the public to attend a talk at the library being offered this coming Wednesday. It speaks to the 3/32 fighter group, which escorted bombers into the Rhineland and the Plessy Oilfields during the Second World War. Some of them are better known as the Tuskegee Airmen, and I think that would be a fascinating talk to participate in. So, I'd hope that our residents can find their way up to the library to hear that.
That's great. That's a good reminder. I'll talk about late shift.
Why don't you go first?
Let me just update the folks there. Last night, and this was the communications issue I was referencing earlier, last Friday, we, we were notified by Senator Headland's office that Congressman Lynch wanted to come to the area of Bob Headland's Senate District and invite those towns to participate in an update on some of the solutions and a particular approach that he was pushing with Congressman Capuano to solve the issue of FEMA insurance rates. It's a, it's a supplement to the Briggs-Waters bill that the Congress passed and that we all voted on last town meeting that said we accept the maps of FEMA, and this, when this was done, the unintended, law of unintended consequences kicked in, and suddenly, people found themselves entrapped in increasing insurance rates, and Congressman Lynch, in a very responsive way, has started to lead the charge to find solutions to the difficulties that that act caused. So, he announced this, and we came out, he came out here last evening. There is a video of that, of that proceeding that's been sent to every one of the towns in Bob Headland's district, and we have copies available as well, and it will be broadcast, I'm told. Betty, you haven't heard when?
I haven't heard the schedule, but I will check, and I'll have that information.
Yeah, we'll have that, we'll put that up on the website to let you know when that's going to happen.
Correct. We're putting a summary of that on the website now. Abby Persall is working on that.
That's great. It's, it's a very complicated issue with, and it doesn't solve all of the problems, but, and I wouldn't take the time this evening to go through it, but it's worthy of watching. And we'd be foolish to think it doesn't impact those of us who don't live in floodplain areas, because it very definitely does. So, I would welcome you to look at that. Okay, Irma?
Three things. The CPC this year has received 24 projects that are going to be looked at. Over the past two Saturdays, we've done a walkabout, and you really do sometimes forget how beautiful this town is. There's still a lot of beautiful, beautiful, open space, and thankfully, most of the poison ivy is gone, but it's out there for the open space. Just lovely, lovely parcels and really worthy projects. It's going to be hard to get them down to the $1.3 million, I think CPC has to spend. And I want to thank Barbara Farnsworth for hosting two focus groups, a week apart, on elder services needs in the town. And the people there, it was great fun. I participated in one of the sessions, and a lot of very meaningful information has been collected from a variety of people in the Elder Services Board, Barbara herself, and a lot of the department heads in town. And the third item, we thank our first responders an awful lot for what they do, but I want to single out two other people today, and they're both very quiet, shy people, so I hope they'll forgive me. Last, two Saturdays ago, on October 26th, we had fires in opposite ends of the town. And this is one of the reasons Mark is a little hyper over our town forest. There was a very large brush fire on the Waymouth line, and the only way you could get to it was Black Rock. And virtually, Captain Powers was in charge, and virtually, our entire fleet, plus Waymouth, plus a few others, were dispatched, and they were there for about six hours. About halfway through, there was an incident at the shipyard, and there was a fire there, and Chief Duff took over that command and had to divert some of our equipment. Two people were called, it was a restaurant, and I happened to be at home, listening to this whole thing unfold on the scanner. This is a Saturday evening, probably around 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock, and the two people that were called and responded within 15 minutes, they were on the scene, Susan Rowe from the Health Department and Bill Nickerson, our wiring inspector. So, I want to single them out. Yes, they both have told me we're only doing your, our job, but there are many ways to do your job. You can either do them in exemplary manner, as these two always do, or you can just do your job. So, I wanted to single them out. That's it.
Thank you. But you triggered something else when you talked about Barbara. Last night, the Welsh healthcare facility, we call it Allerton House here in Hingham, and it was, there was a grand ribbon cutting last night. Bob Headland and I were there with their executives, but it was just a nice, beautiful facility, and it was very well, very well attended, and we're very happy to congratulate them on their future success, for sure. Okay, I'd like to...
You've got one more vote.
We do, we have two more votes, actually. Yeah, I've already caught that.
Okay.
This one will put a smile on some of the folks' face. I'll move that we close Town Hall all day on Friday, November 29, 2013, and to close the town offices at 12 p.m. on December 24th and at 4:30 p.m. on December 31st. It is understood that employees will use accrued personal vacation or compensatory time.
I second that.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, we, we are now going to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of, one, discussing strategy with collective bargaining agreement, and, two, labor negotiations